Good morning. It's the mission of the Big Walnut local schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. I'd like to call the meeting to order and skip to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jeremy, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Crowell.
Here.
Mrs. Dorish.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
And Mr. Schneider is not present.
Item six, superintendent's report. Mrs. Hamburg.
Thank you. Have a few guests this morning. First, we're going to give an overview of what's going on with our athletic department, especially with all of the COVID-19 adjustments that we've needed to make, and then the financial impact that that's having on us as well. So I've asked Mr. Shelton and Mr. Rucker, our two athletic directors, to join us, and they're going to give you an update there.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I put a bunch of handles in here to discuss. I want to start off with my side of the playing. Going back to probably the late July, early August. I was very skeptical. The good news is we're having a season right now. All the teams are playing, all the teams are competing. Our kids are doing what they do and what they love to do. So say, AD, excited. So in front of you there, I had phase four, COVID phase four. I partnered with Stephanie Nigenero, if you can call her, she works for the Delaware General Health District. That document was partnered with her. Kind of going back to early June, we were allowed to start doing something. We started out in phase one, with small groups. It was limited, wait for max us. Then we kind of progressed to phase four. Phase four is, we're not competing, and we're doing as much as we can, compete, and still be safe. So as you can see in that phase four there, there are some governor updates, there are some Big Walnut athletic updates, and there's also some OCC updates. One of those in particular, and I'll come back to them in a minute, I don't want to pan on it, is our league has adopted $7 gate fees for all of us. So that's something I'll hit on later, but I want you to know that that wasn't OCC adopted policy, not something that we adopted. Moving on to B, OSHA compliance review update. The very first Friday night game, I think I found out maybe eight days before that we actually have a game. So within seven days, we got the stadium ready. We're diligent to get that night ready. Other than a lightning strike four hours before game time, it took a press box. It went very well. So I wanted to put a copy of the OSHA compliance review. Good news is we passed to all areas. The only area growth for us was during the game, if you were at the game, people kept congregating toward the middle. And I kept wanting to get a transcript as well. That's probably the least area growth, but I get it. If I was a parent, I'd want to be in the middle as well. Check people spread out as much as possible. I do have dots in the stadium, people sat down. So we've got four on home side, and I've got three on the way. Health department update. Basically, what I, you know, and this is a lot of copies I did not share with you, but I just put a copy in there of what we do for home, home football and away football. But one of my requirements as AD, and Joe did the same thing at middle school, that I have to communicate with all visiting schools. What does it look like when you come to Big Walnut High School? What they say to the protocols? Do we have locker rooms? Do we not have locker rooms? And we're doing that with every single team, so is the teams that we're going to as well. We're mostly aligned. Obviously, Dover County Schools versus Trenna County Schools are some things that are different. But we can communicate with every single school prior to. And that's what that document shows. I send that doc to the AD, they send it to their parents, things like that. For example, our soccer stadium. In order to get 15% in there, we're allowing people to sit outside the bleachers and watch it. By the way, if we can get as many people as possible, we still stay with them. Moving down to B there, compliance officers. This kind of was a surprise to me, but one of the governors, in the recent governor's order, he required compliance officers to be at all home activities. We don't always cover all home activities with school issue. So that's something that would lead to us, for example. Some, it's, it would be, most schools don't have the capacity or number of staff to cover everything. What some schools have done is they've actually hired compliance officers. A neighboring school has hired some officers to help out with some of their events. For us, we just don't have that financial means account. So what we initiated a team at the high school, and Joe set a team at the middle school. We're just giving up reviews, make sure that all of us are probably good with compliance officers. I kind of, when I go to games, I kind of joke about it a little bit with fans. I think they kind of like it, but I joke about it, have a lot of fun with it. But at the end of the day, my new title is AD slash compliance officer. Moving on to D, financial impact. Obviously, with 15%, our budget's going to be a pretty hard issue. Right now, I'm projecting about a $50,000 shortfall. I do think I can mitigate that through a number. The reasons, one, I did, I made some cuts, some non-visual cuts that parents, for example, coaches certifications. There's not many perks to be a high school coach. So one of the things that we do, we pay for their license. It's not a lot of money, but it does add up when you have over 100 coaches on staff. It does add up. Also, I've also not paying their association fees. Coaches all have to do that. They have to, in order for their kids to get recognized outside of OCC, they have to belong to some state association or even a national association. I've always paid those fees for them. In addition, for coaches, I've always tried to offer some training for them. So I have one more clinic, purchasing reading material. So that has been cut this year. That budget cut's probably going to be close to, fluctuates a little bit, close to $10,000 for the year. Coaches understand, they're willing, they understand that. Hopefully, they can bring that back at some point, but that was a cut I had to make this year. We also cut out a huddle camera system that we use to, and to be frank on this one, the company really raised the prices on this. It went from about $3,000 a year to $20,000. It was just way out of my budget this year to do that. So the teams now are picking up that expense on their own. I don't much want to plus it. It's just something I can't, I can't take advantage of. And then I just want to make this point, and I think everybody understands this part, but we are no different than every other high school in Alabama. We are funded by sports to make a profit. We have actually quite a few sports to make a profit. We also have quite a few that don't make a profit. We have quite a few sports that are very expensive to run. We just can't bring in fees. For example, golf. Golf courses are very expensive. Right now, if you have the golf lately, golf course rates are gone. Oh, play a little of courts nowadays, on Saturday and Sundays, it's $7 a round for the golf. You don't have time to go to the weekend, right? So we can replay somewhere else now because it's so costly. Well, that expense is from schools of our own. So golf is just very expensive for us. It's probably between the four teams I have, it's probably $12,000, $13,000 just to have a golf team. And without gate fees, being where they need to be, that's just one of our expenses. You add in, you add in spoon fees, you add in bowling fees, gymnastics fees. All these teams go offsite, they have rental facilities. And the other thing that's really hit us hard is the officiating shortage. Because it's supply and demand issue, there's less officials, so now officiating fees have gone higher. The thought is, if you pay the official more money, you'll get better quality officials, you'll get more officials. But at the end of the day, because of the official shortage, we are paying them a lot more than we used to. So that's a big part of our budget. We have to have officials, it's actually. I want to turn it over to Joey to talk about.
Just to mirror a lot of what Brian said, you know, we are following the compliance of the health department. And just excited to be playing at middle school. Our forecast for our budget is not as grim as what Brian is projecting. And as a matter of fact, last night, we had our first home football game, and we almost doubled our gate total from where we were for our first game last year. So we're expecting to fall within about where we were last year. So we're hoping within the fall season, we're going to be okay with our budgets. We've done several things to try and eliminate as many costs as possible. One thing was we've eliminated all of our paid ticket takers. We're asking teachers to come in and do two of those events throughout the year to cover those costs. And then we've eliminated a site manager position or compliance officer position. So now we have four people to cover all of our home events instead of five, which we typically haven't passed. Some things that have really helped us is we've increased our ticket prices for all spectators to $5. So in the past, it's been $5 for adults, three for students. We've increased that to $5 for all. Yes. Our football games, because if we fell within the compliance of what the health department said, we were only going to be able to get one and a half people on our home side and about one visitor on the away side. So we've moved all of our football games over to the high schools. So a huge thank you to Brian and his staff for that. So now we're able to give four tickets to the home people and three for visitors. And we're actually looking to increase that to six, or maybe even eight for our homes. So that will help us tremendously. For our volleyball games, which is our other ticketed events in the fall, what we're doing is we'll have the seventh grade play, and then when that game is over, we will just empty the gym, and that's when we will bring in everybody for the eighth grade game so we can maximize our seating there. We are very limited to approximately 100 people in general time. So we've done several things. Brian was talking about the coach reimbursements. We're trying to work with boosters right now to get support in order to pay for our coaching reimbursements, which we usually cover in the past. So several things that we're looking to do in order to reduce our expenditure. But again, we're just excited to be playing and just looking at the forecast. We should be okay compared to where we've been in previous seasons.
If I could just add, as they're switching back with the teachers taking tickets, that was kind of a creative idea we came up with, just to kind of share a little more on that. Through our teacher contract, they are required to do a few evening events a year, and a lot of those events we can't have right now because of COVID. And so we have partnered with them to have them take tickets. And so instead of having paid ticket taker positions, we're able to use them as part of their evening commitments. And so again, every little bit adds up as we're looking at decreases in our gate funding.
And then in conclusion here, looking at F there, what are some options for alternative funding? A down there, seeking donations. So we're in the process right now of working local level events. Company that we use will host games and tickets. Working with Jeremy, so we'll be having a donation campaign soon. One thing I know about our community, and I'm very confident about our community, I've been here now 20 something years, but if I've asked for something, they've responded very well. And I know if I seek donations, the response is going to be very well. As an AD, I've never gone out and just asked for cash. Always a little help would ring there. But if you're ever going to do that, now's probably the time to do that. And when I say ask for cash, without any purpose. It's just seeking a donation. If there's a clear purpose in mind, if they're bold in mind, we're going to do this for you. So here, we have a clear goal in mind, try to help balance the budget, make sure our kids are protected. B, a golf outing in the spring. There's a lot of rules with golf outings, and I hope they're using the spring. But these are, these are something we can do. If anyone likes to play golf, and Joe likes to play golf, so we can probably have a pretty good outing and make it pretty fun. And then C is a one large fundraiser. One of our long-term goals of Rooster Club is to get to a point where we're having one large fundraiser, one fundraiser that's for all teams and all sports. But again, that's something right now that might be difficult based on the circumstances. So just kind of hold off on that for a little bit. Unfortunately, I have some really good community members that know how to make this happen. So that's all I've got.
Before questions, I just want to again publicly thank these two. There's so much work that has gone on behind the scenes, and every year, there's so much work that goes on behind the scenes before games actually start that people don't see in general. But they have had to just be able to very quickly pivot this year with very little notice and make adjustments. And I just am really proud of the work that they and their staff have done to get our kids out there competing. And I think things have gone really well because of everybody's hard work, and just wanted to say publicly how much I appreciate that.
I do have one question. The streaming fee, are we sharing in that?
Yeah, we get a small percentage of it. So the way those cameras work, first of all, technology-wise, it's crazy. So they actually operate by themselves. And this is kind of a deeper conversation from the standpoint of, one of my long-term goals of broadcasting, we're not quite there yet. What these cameras do is they film the games by themselves. So they actually follow the ball, they follow it, and they're able to stream them online, control them through our computers. We do get a percentage of the fee. It's not a harsh percentage. And the reason why is, we get those cameras, they're $750 a month. We get those cameras for 10 years. No other expenses to provide. So if a camera break, lightning strike, something happens to them, they come out, replace them, fix them, pay your costs. There's no maintenance fees, anything like that. So we do give up a little bit of subscription fee in order to get the cameras out of your disposal. So it's not a percentage I would want, we would get us one percentage. Now, the other thing I could do on that, but we get to the point of maybe broadcasting on a larger scale. We could actually get advertisers and sponsors on there. And actually broadcast them, do a ESPN game or something like that. We actually get larger sponsors. If I get large sponsors on there, I get 100% of that sponsorship.
And then to that, who owns the copyright then to the recording? Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate, as parent of a high school athlete, appreciate all that you guys have done to make this happen. The coaches who have scrambled to adjust contests and add contests so our kids can do what they love. And I guess I would just want to remind our parents and our community that it's not ideal right now to be a spectator. However, the fact is that it's about these kids and that you guys have worked to make sure they can be out there on the field, and I appreciate that.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you guys. All right, shifting gears over to academics. Mrs. Young with her academic update. And typically, she does this in the evening, which she will be next week as well. But we're focusing this morning on giving you an update on the plan if we need to go into crisis remote learning. You done?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are off and running, so I think at this point, it's appropriate to talk about, we're calling our crisis remote learning plan, and calling it that again as to not confuse with our VLP. Lots of guidelines and bullet points, which I placed in front of you. I'm not going to read all of those to you. This is a document that is for our staff, that our instructional leadership committee, which is made up of over 30 staff members, admin, and teachers, helped create this throughout the summer. I will tell you, it is still, while it's finalized-ish, it's a little bit of a working document because what we're finding is, in particular for our elementary and our intermediate, our VLP is following a very similar model to this right now. And so it's actually been really good because we've already had conversations. I just had one last night with the intermediate building, talking about how they've already made adjustments based on things they've learned in the VLP. So we're going to go ahead and make those adjustments on here as well, and I will let you know as we get to that. So it, the VLP, especially K6, because they're really following this model, has been a really good trial and error. Just in case, I'm very much hoping, like everyone else, that we don't have to use this. And this was just something that we, you know, one thing I'm glad we wasted a lot of time on. So that would be, that would be a good thing in this case. So just starting through elementary, again, I'm just going to highlight some things for you, and certainly as you take it home and look through more, if you have more questions, feel free to reach out. So the one thing to highlight at the top is that the idea would be students would spend three to four hours on remote learning a day. And that number was not arbitrary. That number came from, we added up all of the hours that a student would be in class. It's basically focused on the high school because that's where the most hours are. They don't have recess, that type of thing. And it's a little over four hours, four and a half, if that they're in a classroom. So if every teacher were to teach bell to bell, the second that bell rings, to the second the bell ends, it would be about 4:20, 4:25. You know, if that does not happen, there are things like attendance, that doesn't happen. So that is where we came up with the three to four. And then also with the idea that when you're at home and you're hopefully focused more, that you can get through more quickly. So that's where the three to four hours came from. The two main platforms we're using is School-Age and Google Meet. Again, that's what we've been using so far in our VLP. School-Age is the learning management system where we'll push materials out. And then Google Meet, if they do a live session, we'll be using the Google Meet platform. We got a lot of feedback in the spring, a lot of feedback on our parent survey, as well as staff and students saying it was very confusing, forced to course. You know, teacher A sets it up this way, teacher B sets it up this way, I can't help my student. So that's where the Big Walnut Weekend of Glance comes in. So there is a format. 712 uses the same format, and K6 uses the same format. Teachers are required to use the Weekend of Glance. So it will get posted Monday by 8:00 AM. And again, this is happening as we speak in the VLP. Posted by 8:00 AM, and it is the whole week, Monday. Here's what your assignment is in reading, here's your link for your Google Meet math, here's what that looks like. Lot of feedback from parents trying to manage work schedules, that it was helpful to know upfront at the beginning what the whole week looks like. So if they have a personally busy Tuesday, they can maybe add some of that stuff to Monday. So I will say that many of our teachers, not even in our VLP, but our in-person teachers, are using the Weekend of Glance right now in class, just so kids are used to it and parents are used to it. So that should we have to go remote, that they're used to that format. Office hours, each teacher, again, that was based on feedback that, like, that I met with my teacher, but if I have a question in the afternoon, how do I get ahold of my teacher? Each teacher will be required to hold office hours for 60 minutes every day in addition to the lessons that they're teaching, so that parents can sign up or students can sign up for a time to get some help. And that will be at a predetermined, consistent, that they have to communicate to families. And again, that's something that we're doing currently in the VLP. One thing I did want to highlight is that we really want our teachers to be cognizant of the screen time, which is really difficult in a virtual environment. Just by nature of being remote, we're going to have more screen time. However, really encouraging our teachers to incorporate more writing, hands-on. You'll notice another bullet on there talks about the go bags. The first two weeks of school, our teachers created these for students. So that we have a situation like March 15, they're ready to go. The students can grab them on their way out the door, and they're ready with the elementary level, things like foundations, which is our phonics program, foundation letter tiles and sight word cards, and little leveled readers at their level. So those are all ready, packed, and ready to go, just in case. And those were picked up for our virtual learning program. Students, we already did that model where they did pick up those materials, which we did not do in the spring. And so again, to address that screen time issue, to actually get books in kids' hands and off the screen so much. So below that on the elementary one, you'll see kind of what the schedule looks like. And you'll notice there's some range and some flexibility. So for reading and math, well, it says students will have two to four small group math lessons a week. Now, the reason the two to four in there is the same reason it would be flexible in our classrooms, is it's personalized for students. If you have a student that's really struggling with reading, they're probably meeting with their teacher quartered one day through Thursday for 15 minutes, really addressing what those issues are. If you have, maybe a student that's a high flyer and is working in a book club, maybe they're only meeting two or three times a week. So it's really based on what the students need. And you'll notice this model follows what we, exactly what we're doing in the classroom. Now, of course, they would, math and reading, they would meet every day when they're in the classroom because they have more time. But this follows, we expect small group. We don't expect them to get on Zoom or Google Meet and watch a 45-minute math lesson and then go do work after that. So it's very short, 15 to 20 minutes, small group, what that group needs. Then they get off of the Google Meet and go do the assignment. So you'll notice there's assignments in there as well. For writing, having that daily or weekly writing assignment, and then having either a one-on-one meet conference with a student or a small group conference based on a particular skill, just like we would in the classroom. Flipping it over to the back, so our content area, science, social studies, health and wellness at the elementary level. They will have daily lessons. However, those are not live lessons. Those, they can use time for kids. Any hands-on activity they ask the kids to do, using things they push out through School-Age videos, they've created, that type of thing. And the same goes with specials. So those are not live, those are lessons that are pushed out to students. And a big reason why those are not live on Google Meet is the feedback from parents saying, I don't want my kid on a screen on a Google Meet all day long. I have a friend who is in Hudson right now doing their remote learning, and second grader has to be on Google Meet from 8:00 AM to almost 2:00 PM every day. And it's just a lot for a second, well, really for anybody. That'd be a lot for me, but certainly a second grader. So really trying to balance that, the focus at the elementary on math reading and writing and getting those small group lessons in. And then you'll notice on Friday, Friday looks a little different. So Friday's when we pull in that class meeting, that social, emotional learning, tying in that advisory time. And there's some ideas there you can see, as well as those student check-ins. So it could be a student check-in with a small group who's struggling with a concept, but it's also a time for teachers to check in with those students who are not engaging in the learning, which we know we will have. And to reach out to those families, get the administrator involved, have those conferences so we can ensure that they're engaging. And then also office hours on Friday as well. And then Laura, do you want to address some of the questions?
For our students in the specialized learning center, these are our students who have the greatest academic need, who are doing work very different from their peers. So we have our intervention specialists needing to do a reading lesson, a math lesson every day for those students at their level. Could be individual or small group, many of them individual because the needs are so different. Writing lessons, depending on the student's IEP, would be one to two times a week. And then students are doing their science or social studies lesson that their classroom teacher would provide to them, just like they would on a typical day, but with modifications made by their intervention specialist. The other thing that we need to make sure that our students have access to are their related services. All of our SLC students give either speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, some physical therapy, adaptive PE. So that is all tied into this also, that through teletherapy. And they also have School-Age paid, which gives parents a lot of other ideas and things that they can practice to work on, and things that the therapist suggests that students can do during that time. So theirs looks very different, but they still have a Weekend of Glance and what they need to do with all their links right on there.
The last piece to note that looks very different than it did in the spring. Again, got lots of feedback in the spring about grades and ensuring that if we were to go into remote learning again, as well as with our VLP, that we grade in a similar, and assess students in a similar fashion that we do in class. So that is what we intend to do. So you'll see under the elementary about, that they should be receiving feedback weekly on their assignments, just like they would in class. In addition to all of, during those small groups, they're getting feedback as they learn in those small groups. But then it will be reported on the report card in a typical fashion. They're assessing mastery of those standards, just like, I don't seem to get that, just like, but in a similar manner that they would if they were in class.
And I think a big point we talked about on that is, obviously, it's a little different when we were kind of thrown into it in the middle of March versus we've had time to plan and prepare for that, everybody, whether it be a student, a parent, or a teacher.
With that assessment, what other large items for our intervention specialists, our students on IEPs, they do have to cut data on the student's IEP goals, which we kind of didn't do in the spring because when we weren't sure how to do that, we were just going to his on and doing some learning. So we do have to do IEP practice reports each night.
And Laura, you guys are doing a lot of IEPs and parent meetings and things via Google Meet and able to kind of adjust some of those things as well?
For our IEP students who are in the virtual learning program right now, I think I did mention too, that we had to talk with each parent and talk about how their services would be, what they would look like. We will do the same thing, should we go into our crisis remote learning with our parents, make sure they understand how IEP minutes, and the things that we have to provide for the students and community.
All right, moving on to the intermediate school. Most of the bullets are exactly the same as the elementary. The only difference is the schedule. So you'll notice underneath instruction, it's more period-based at the intermediate building. So it will run on a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday schedule. So you notice Monday, Wednesday would be periods one through four, ending at around noon, around lunchtime. Tuesday, Thursday would be periods five through seven, again, ending around lunchtime, with the afternoon for the kids to do the work, use office hours, that type of thing. But something to note here, even though it says period one, 9:00 to 9:30, that does not mean that the teacher is going to be on with every student doing a live lesson from 9:00 to 9:30. It could be that from 9:00 to 9:15, she works with this group of students, and then 9:15 to 9:30, she works with another group. And this is one of the items that we've learned in our VLP. We started the first week, the teachers started doing whole group. They were doing a mini lesson to, you know, 30 kids, which at that point is not interactive because you can't interact with 30 people on a Google Meet, especially 30 11-year-olds on a Google Meet. So then, I think after three or four days, they went down to half the class and split the class into half, did half of the class at the beginning and then half at the end. And after talking to one of them last night, she said, next week, we're actually going to go down to thirds. So they're still adjusting on the fly to realize even 15 kids, she feels like at that point, it's, you might as well push out a video because you really can't interact. So they're excited to try the seven kids. They feel like in a shorter amount of time, but less kids, you'll, when they're in a group according to their needs, then they'll get more accomplished. So again, that doesn't necessarily mean that these kids will be on from 9:00 until 11:45 by any means. It could just be a piece, pieces and parts of that. And the rest looks like the elementary in terms of guidelines and expectations. Middle school, exactly the same. The only difference again is the schedule. So you'll notice, again, they have their 30-minute blocks there. So you'll notice, again, they have their thirty-minute blocks there, office hours in the afternoon, Fridays for that advisory and that student support piece. And you'll see that theme across, across all of the levels. The only difference on the middle school, which you'll see at middle school and high school, is if you look to the back under assessment, the staff really wanted all assignments due by Sunday at midnight, kind of following a college model that instead of, well, this teacher they're due on Wednesday and this one Friday, they really wanted them all to at midnight by Sunday, so that families know that. And that, you'll find that at the high school as well. And then grades, they're not standards-based grades, they're traditional grades. But they'll be reported in the same fashion, there will be no pass fail. They'll be reported in a traditional fashion. And then at the high school, again, you'll notice the exact same theme, the Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. You'll notice longer periods there, so fifteen minutes longer than intermediate and middle. But I will tell you, just spoke to Mr. Jados recently, and there's been some conversation with teachers, again, who've just been doing this for a couple of weeks now, that would like to take that down possibly to forty minutes instead. But again, this does not mean that these kids are in front of a screen from nine to twelve forty-five. It could be fifteen minutes here, and then I'm off, and then another fifteen. But really trying to leave those afternoons open for number one, flexibility for families, and aligning that across the district, as well as for those office hours into work. So while this looks like a lot of hours on a screen, so remember that some of these periods at the high school are lunch. So most kids only have five periods, six some, so three and three. There are some outliers that have seven, but most five or six. So it would be three and three, or if they have four one day, maybe the next day they only have two. So while it looks like a lot of time there, keep in mind, they're not on for periods one through five, especially with study halls and lunch and that type of thing. And then on Friday, you'll notice student support, but it's more of a regimented calendar. And that is because if you remember, last year, they implemented the Eagle Time model, where kids, we have a period on Wednesdays where kids can go and get help or do a reassessment. And so these periods are set up that way. The teachers really wanted it that way, so that if a kid needed help in math, they could also schedule a time for their English teacher. And so it really follows the Eagle Time model that they're used to. It's just Eagle Time Friday instead of, instead of on Wednesday. And again, remembering that, so students on Friday, so even if a student has, let's say, four periods that they're on the whole time, Monday and Wednesday, let's just say worst-case scenario, a kid, which I don't see happening, but we'll say worst-case scenario, kid's on for four hours on Monday or Wednesday. Keep in mind, they have the whole day Friday, essentially, to do that work. And so there is some flexibility there for families and for students to get that work done since it's not due until Sunday.
I just want to add that our intervention specialists, who are co-teachers also at all those different levels, when that class period, if I'm an intervention specialist in the first period math class, I can do this co-teaching with my general education teacher, or I could pull a small group of students separately. But as Jen said, we can divide the group into different areas based on need, just as we would in the classroom. So there will just be two teachers providing this stuff.
Any questions to this? I know it's logged. Again, I'll move on after you do that.
No, I want to obviously say, and I'm sure that our superintendent was about to say it as well, just what a remarkable job you've done in a short amount of time in taking the lessons learned from the spring and applying them to this. And to your point, now hopefully we won't have to use it. I think one of the other things that we saw in the spring was just the other tentacles that kind of the school day provides to students. And I'm wondering, is there a way for families to maybe signal? You know, oftentimes, a teacher might identify that a kid is struggling with something, go see a counselor, receive some support. Are there ways for families to maybe still engage in those services if that were to come up?
That's a, that's a great idea, absolutely, that's a great idea. We had, we had a thought through that, but I think that's a great idea, of having a way that families could signal if they need a counselor, because they would obviously be working as well during that time, so that's a great idea.
And we do have our Ohio Guide students, Centura professors, who are working with students through VLP. And then in the spring also, so those will continue for students that they're currently seeing or students that are identified. But we need to make sure our counselors, yeah.
Identifying new issues is the, more of a challenge.
And have those been, like, are the current caseload of those counselors really based on attendance? Or is it, they're just already within a certain identified range?
For Guide Stone and for Centura, those are students who have already been identified, either last year and are continuing services. And we're just to the point where we're identifying new students now, given the year, and we need to use those services.
Okay, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you to both of you. Okay, and last item for superintendent's report would be our construction update. We have our director of facilities, Mr. Schwartzman. Looks like he's got a visitor with him as well. So I'll let him introduce Jeff.
Good morning. So Jeff Baumann's with me, he's project manager of Gilbane. And the only subject we're going to talk about today is what's known as change order zero four five. I emailed it out fairly late in the afternoon, early evening yesterday to the board members. There was a handout copy, again, at the very top page, right at the top, construction manager at risk, change order signature form, type below that, it says zero four five. This is signature at the bottom already, if you have to take a seat down. So what we're going to do, again, this change order is coming out today because the board had asked for an initial presentation at a board meeting, followed by a subsequent meeting for a resolution, hopefully approval of said document in case change order takes place. This change order calls into the board's change order authorization policy, which again, says any change order in the case of an ad over a hundred thousand dollars must come before the board's formal action. This change order, as the email said last night, as you can see on that front page, is worth two hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and four dollars. It is specifically for what's known as GMP threes. Remember, you do an amendment, several amendments to Gilbane's contract. GMP zero three was to build a high school. More specifically, this is for the trades of plumbing, fire protection, and mechanical, or HVAC. Gilbane then hired a T P mechanical to undertake that work. And so that's what it stands today. I'm going to take this little bigger picture again. I think I've discussed this before, but just in case for the newer board members who are going to take the big picture, and then Jeff's going to step forward and kind of overlay the process specifically to this change order and answer any questions. So as a reminder, how do we get to the GMP three? How did we originally hire Gilbane last August, actually, to build the high school? So there's what's called a GMP set of documents. It is approximately eighty percent set of documents the architect undertakes. It includes a narrative where they try to fill in that twenty percent gap of things they haven't drawn. That is what Gilbane and their team used to come up with their estimate, their cost. That's what we reconciled, bring forward for the amendment, or actually the formal contract. So that was last August in the case of the high school. From there, the architect though continues to draw. They continue, and their engineers continue to complete the sets. They bring it to what's called a reconciled or permit set, or the hundred percent set. That reflects any compensation by the building department, any requirements from engineers, the architects, anything else known. So again, it's a simple way to look at it. There's an eighty percent set versus a hundred percent set. This reflects the reconciliation of those two, should any be necessary. It's a normal process, a normal part of a process with the CM at risk delivery model. That's part of the point, point in case of the delivery model. Again, the benefit of this delivery model, just to remind you, is, is speed or schedule. By going now and awarding the eighty percent set or expedited schedule, in theory, saving costs on inflation, in theory, saving costs for getting us to building faster, et cetera. So this is part and parcel of the delivery model. This one goes on to over a hundred grand. So with their best, Jeff to kind of step up, walk you through what happens in terms of reconciling, what are some of the big picture items, and then walk you through the change order itself, with a little bit more information real quick.
So feel free to, there may be a question. Much better comfortable with people in school. So, probably asking yourself, why a change order of this volume now? So you, we want, our process is, we want that eighty percent drawing to avoid initial things, initial scope costs. So structural steel is one that goes up a lot, everything goes up. Structural steel goes up a lot, and it goes up fast, and it's quick. So if you don't have this cost and the structural steel cost by waiting before the design, the build process. So we like it early, we can buy it early, and then we can modify this. So if you look at this change order, the details of this change order, you will see items that are bulleted, just both in this, one thirty-three, one fifty-seven. These are, the contractor's ideas are okay. Their original cost was, was this, permit cost was this. We have ideas to drive it down to what the number is in front of you. So you'll see that this number originally was five ninety-nine, and then it was driven down to the number in front of you with the contractor's input. So this is a more of a teamwork approach, contractor and the architect and the design firm work together to drive this down to the number in front of you. And you've got the advantage of structural steel being bought before increases came in. That's kind of how the process works. It's not the whole process, but that's how it works. So for instance, HVAC is the biggest one. Again, why is it the biggest one? So HVAC has to follow things in the design process. And you get structure, we have the loading of the soil, we have to get the structure up. Hey, that steel beam is too big, we got to reduce it, get ductwork under there. Ductwork is always the last thing they figure out. And we, we make some assumptions, and then later on, you refine those assumptions with information you have. And so HVAC, another thing you'll notice in the details of this change order are tonnages, contractors price ductwork per ton. So if you see a, the duct is twelve by twelve, a GMP set, and changes to just sixteen by sixteen, that doesn't sound like a lot, it doesn't look like a lot, but the tonnage is the difference. They buy it by the ton, they price it by the ton, all of them do that. That's how they do it, and that drives the cost up. So those are the big components. You can see there's fire protection in this number. It's a liner in the grand scheme, but forty thousand dollars is. There's no plumbing changes, and the rest is all HVAC and ductwork.
So we definitely took you, page two and three, you follow up here, and catch on the bottom, page two on the back, is the again, for fire protection. There's a quote add of forty thousand five hundred. You go to the next page, there's no record reconciliability on the deal for plumbing. The longer that it's pointed out, we'll point it out as HVAC. A lot of this is a tonnage, or a lot of ductwork, including that on the side of ductwork, it's seven hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred. And the others are the typical fees applied by the speed, earned profit, insurance, that applies to any contract, these pages are contract amendment. So those three thousand seventeen hundred fifty nine hundred are their typical fees applied to, to earned profit and insurance, that's eighty for that one, two thousand four four four. This is a very rigorous process, this is here, so again, talk about generalities. They can, you've got the eighty percent set, you have a hundred percent set. Basically, the architect and the contractors apply, they literally announce this product has been, can raise the hundred percent over the eighty percent, and clearly flag very quickly and visually where the differences are, and then start doing take-offs. It's not just one meeting, it's dozens of meetings, lots of virtual meetings in this today's world, lots of back and forth, talking about scope, adds, deductions, quantity, unit cost, labor cost, et cetera. Again, we're involved in, the architecture is involved in this ourselves, there's some players that would agree, make the, out of background, or to get where we are today. So we use this as an opportunity to talk to the generalities, but then also a couple of specifics to this one, and then have to answer any questions.
So is this an increase on what we approved for the GMP three?
This is an add to their contract, yes. And again, this is the reconciliation of the scope difference between that GMP set and the final set of documents, specifically used to create it.
Could you talk for the board about where that money comes from? I know that was a conversation we had.
It's been tracked for quite some time on the records of the change order log. You see every month, if you that's in next week. For a long time, it was held as a single line, it said high school GMP reconciliation. And it was involved with a specific number that we were holding. As numbers started to come in, so as Jeff got his initial, this, these three factors, this trade, this contractor, what's happening in the balance, we started holding money for that. Now we're finding out for twenty, the last several weeks, including now, those numbers are being reconciled, and following to the exact number. So we were holding a large amount, always trying to manage the risk for the worst case in terms of potential, now this becoming the reality, this is the real number. Some numbers are higher, some numbers are lower, this is what we were hoping to do, which happened, and we're actually, we're tracking that.
So this is money we thought would go into this high school project. We just weren't sure exactly where we thought, we're not asking the board to add more money. That's what I thought when he initially showed me.
This is use of contingency. We already have under risk management, again, once Jeff, once we get the hundred percent set, and they start to see some differential, when the contractor come back with them initially and say, I think you've added, you've added a boiler, it's just that, that's not what we did. And that's a hundred thousand dollars. Okay, Jeff, like, our request to Jeff is always make sure we're managing against risk pay with the option, if you can then put in that track anymore. There's a hundred thousand dollars in case we get MPA three, we could be there, that could be a number. If you have reconciliations, now we'll number, it's just a secondary number. And then if we go through, if there's any more, we get to the final reconciliation. If there's no scope there, it's a common, it's a zero. Or if there is scope there, we leave it, we're going to add or change. Such as the reconciliation, hundred dollars per cost, in case we get a late return. But this is that reconciliation, we were already tracking it, it's been too long. It's already money in the project, we just kind of decided for that. It's just fine that we're adding it to that. It's such a good, is that making sense? Is that good, though? Is that a good one?
I follow it. My basic question, though, so this money's actually in the contingency?
It's in our contingency now, too.
How much money's left in the contingency?
Uh, I can get that back to you. Okay, with four next weeks left, I'm just glad I have you.
Yeah, close over there.
Okay.
So we get the process, next week, we turn up the formal reconciliation, actually, we'll take action, to operate Jeff, where, sorry, we're going to be signing off on it. So there was just the presentation of it. Again, there are other changers, you can see those on the board. Now, if we're going from a single line to reconciliation, like they acted a trade, you're going to see others next week, but we've been able to sign to the fining story, whether there's adds or deductions, again, same, you're reconciling, if you go both ways, from the process, essentially, eighty percent set, a hundred percent set, what can, and if the reconciliation still complements to, Jeff said, goal, is trying to make sure there are no differentials, or if the ideal is, it's really want to align. Typically, and maybe reinforced, or why this one, it can be so large, just Jeff pointed out, when that eighty percent set comes out, the least complete portion of the documents is going to be electric plumbing and plumbing. They're the last ones for the party. When I said eighty percent set, probably ninety-five percent architectural, but seventy, seventy-five percent, again, of plumbing. So there's a little more risk there. The engineers try to put together a narrative to fill the gap. Gilbane's along for the entire design process, or the contract, they just showed up on the dinner and said, what are you building or doing? They're there the whole time, so they already have, if you will, some house knowledge, they're always trying to achieve. So that, some of that risk analysis, just to try to make sure they're able to take you as close to a hundred million, that's good, really good. There's always some type of reconciliation, but you go both ways. And once you next week, you report, there are some that are zero, some that are negative, and others that were adds, to get any relief, there was some differences. But it was all tracked, it was a single line, and initially, there's a potential risk to be reconciled, now that we're using the federal one, so that there's a pattern.
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
And again, I would encourage you to digest this, if you have questions over the next week, to please reach out to Doug, so hopefully we're ready for next week.
I think it's Monday, so my board, I still have meetings in the office hours, probably daytime. So if there's eleven o'clock in the day, it's when I'm sitting off, I'm sort of, quality time after the conference.
Thanks to both of you. All right, just two last quick things. Wanted to make sure all the board members saw, Timmy sent out an invitation. We are taking the facilities committee for a tour of the mostly completed Prairie Run Elementary, and also to see progress on the high school. That's on October fifth. We sent that to all board members. If you're not able to make that, and would like to go a different time, just reach out and let us know, and we can set something up. And then the last thing is Jacob Ross, who is a senior at the high school, will be our student board member this year, and he will be joining us next week. So I just want to let everyone know that. And I know Mr. Schneider's planning to reach out and chat with him prior to that, but he will be here next week, so just wanted you to know. When you show up, we'll have our new student board rep, so we're excited about that. And that is all I have today.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions for Angie before we move forward? All right, item seven, treasurer's report, Jeremy.
I don't have too much to add, but I just, I want...
I don't have too much to add, but I just, I wanted to, um, kind of reiterate our athletic situation, um, and Brian and Joe, we've, we've all been working very close just to kind of monitor the situation, but as, um, uh, it would be great if we make it to the end of our fiscal year and, uh, no transfer is needed, but that is one thing, just to be, as we are, uh, providing what we're needing for each of the, the sports as we go throughout the year, uh, there may be, as we're providing those services to our, our community and our kids, that, uh, we may end up needing to make a transfer if we're not able to bridge that entire gap. So just kind of putting the whole picture together, um, I think, proud of, of all the work that, uh, the kids are doing, uh, what our, our coaches are doing, and what our athletics directors are doing, because it, it has taken a lot to get to this point, and, um, but, and I know they're doing all they can too, to kind of bridge that gap between being able to have a hundred percent capacity and fifteen percent capacity, that's a pretty huge hit for an athletic department.
I think one thing on football games too, that, um, I think did not get said here is, we typically have five home football games at a hundred percent capacity seating, and we have two scheduled right now. So, there's the fifteen percent, but then there's also just the fact that we only have two gates coming in for football, and typically, we, we get a lot of money from football that helps support all of our athletic programs. Um, there is potential, depending on how the playoff situation goes this year, that we could host either, um, a playoff game, or potentially, if we don't make it as far in playoffs, we can pick up other games later, so it's kind of weird how they're doing it this year, um, but just wanted to point that out as well. So, again, not as concerned about the middle school, as Joe said, they seem like they might be able to keep their heads above water, just need maybe a little bit of help, but the high school is, is very concerning, so just again, want to get that on your radar.
Um, otherwise, we have started, we're now getting into three months into our fiscal year, um, as I've kind of shared before, things are, especially our cash flows are just very different than in past years, uh, so continuing to, to monitor how things are going, but continue to feel, um, comfortable with what we've, I guess, comfortable with at least the numbers that we're projecting, um, of how we're, how we're looking, so. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. I did get my, um, postcard yesterday from the auditor's office, basically giving me the warning that home values were headed up, so. Um, item eight, selected board policies, Mark?
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Just wanted to bring to you, uh, a quick discussion item this morning on title nine, we are looking at some potential revisions. Um, so if you recall, you approved this, uh, August thirteenth at the more, board meeting, uh, that morning, a month ago now. Um, and from there, as we have finished all of our required trainings, Laura and I, as the coordinators and investigators, and each of the steps there, um, it's six total trainings that we have done. Uh, we have also, um, provided training for our staff through our Public School Works program, that's not required under the policy, uh, that is just something that they suggest that we do. Um, we also provided a, a link for that training for each of you, not sure if you've had an opportunity to look at that, but certainly, uh, a quick training there, um, that, that just again, kind of outline, outlines the process for things. Um, but then, uh, looking at that a little bit more after being trained with everything, uh, we have gone back and, and, um, looked at some things. The biggest item there, the biggest substantial change that you'll see in a revision request is on hearings. So with, um, with the title nine policy, they, they speak to hearings being held. Uh, so just to outline the process very quickly, um, you have a coordinator, you have investigators, you have, um, a decision maker, and you have a person to hear appeals, that's, that's the process, that's who you have to have designated within the district. The policy only requires that you, um, identify the coordinator, that's who would, would initially receive a complaint. Um, the coordinator can be an investigator, but the coordinators cannot be a decision maker or the appeal person, they need separate people. And so because of that, you'll see one change in the revision that we'll share later today, um, is the coordinator role, Laura Lawrence is there, I'm listed on, on there as a coordinator, but under this rule, um, what we have decided to do is look at Laura being just the sole coordinator, because the coordinator doesn't, um, get overly involved unless they investigate, but we have to have a separate person for decision making. So I will be the decision maker, um, and then Angie would hear any appeals, uh, with this process. And so with that, um, there are specific pieces in there with, with regard to hearing, that hearing is required at the collegiate level, hearings are not required at the K-12 level. So when a complaint comes into the coordinator, the coordinator then oversees the entire process, the coordinator takes that complaint, and then works with the investigator, unless they are the investigator, then they are, they begin the investigation of the process. Once they have completed the investigation, the report of the investigation is sent to both parties, the complainant and the respondent, as well as the decision maker. There is then a ten day period where those people can choose to, uh, review all the materials in the investigation, uh, both the complainant's side and the respondent's side, they may get attorneys involved at that point, they may get other people involved at that point, they're allowed to do that under this process. And from there, that ten day window, they can submit additional questions that they would like to be, um, asked of one of the other persons. Um, they are submitting information essentially before the decision maker makes a final decision. So the decision maker is then taking in all this information, and then makes a final decision on if there was a violation of, um, of discrimination based on sex. And so with all that information, that is where potentially a hearing could be held. Now, the advice is that if you put the word hearing in your policy, which we currently have, the word hearing is used twenty-three times in this policy. And so what you'll see to the revision is, because we're not required to do it, we, we don't see the need to have to provide even more to this process that we already don't have the number of people to be able to handle. Um, again, all it does is create cross-examination of witnesses, it creates essentially a court process through this hearing. Um, attorneys can be involved, and, and essentially creates a courtroom of our conference room space. It's really not the place that K-12 schools are advised to be. Um, the way, the reason we had it in there initially was because it puts it in more as like a, we may do this, or if the, if the, um, district chooses to have a hearing, then here are all the things that have to happen. But upon further advice from council, they have said, you know, if you put it in there as an if or a may, then they generally say, you should probably do it, because otherwise, if you do it in one case and not in another case, now you're open to some liability there. Um, so they have advised generally K-12 districts, unless they have a big team working through this, that they would not do hearings. Um, they say, you know, reserve the hearings really for the collegiate level. So that is really the biggest change that we're looking at, um, with these revisions, is changing out Laura and me to just Laura, and then as the coordinator, and then from there, also taking out everything related to the hearing pieces. So there are quite a few red lines that you'll see in this, but that's because, again, it's mentioned twenty-three times throughout this policy. Um, other than that, um, once the decision maker makes the decision, then that is sent to both parties, and then from there, there can be an appeal process, which will be heard by the superintendent in this case. So it's a lot, I just wanted to kind of walk you through the process that we have learned through all this, as, as we've been formally trained. I will also, uh, remind you, as I put in my weekly update, um, to, to each of you, that we do have everything posted on our website, as required by the policy as well, all of our training materials are there, uh, each of the courses, uh, the materials are there from the courses, so that you can see those. Um, it is right underneath the district page, under the Board of Education, um, you'll see the compliance officers, is the way that we have posted that, and many districts have. Um, but any questions? And I know I'll be able to send that out to you here, um, right after this meeting, and then if you have questions throughout the week, what we'd like to do is bring this back to you next week. Um, it can be passed under just one reading, um, that'll be up to the board, if they would like it to be just one reading and a passage, um, to go into effect at that point, or it can be a, a two reading piece, if there are questions or, um, more discussion needed as far as a, uh, uh, just the, the elimination of hearings from the policy.
I just had one comment, um, I was able to go out and see the materials, but I did not receive a link, um, to take the training.
Okay, my apologies for that, I had sent that within Public School Works, but I'll check back on that, and I'll, I'll send you all a follow-up email this morning on that.
Any other questions for Mark?
And that's about a twenty to thirty minute training, just so you know, it kind of just goes through some PowerPoint slides about, and really all, for your standpoint and the staff's standpoint with that training, that level one training is more of just acknowledging, if you have a report, to make sure that that goes to the coordinator, that's, that's the main focus of it.
Which I think is important in your roles, because a lot of times, people in the public will approach you with situations, and it kind of gives you an understanding if it's something that you would need to report or not.
Right, exactly.
I previously voiced my concern on that, and suggested we have a work session on that as a board, and I haven't seen it placed on the agenda. We're going through a process here, that once we change the policies, then the boards, if we did have a work session, we may have different decisions on those policies. I had, I've spent a lot of time reading a directive from May, and the biggest problem with that, the reason the directive came out is because of the chain of command, and it pretty much took away a board's legal defense that they didn't know what was going on. It states that the board, which is us, is assumed to know, which takes away the legal defense. I still think that the board should have a work session with council present to answer the questions, because I still think there's personal liability to all of us, if it's not done.
And I, I would say certainly we're, we're open to putting that together, if that's the wish of the board, but we've, I think that was just mentioned at the last meeting, and we haven't even had an opportunity to, to talk with Brad yet on timing, or, so certainly if, if you all talk, and that's the wish of the board, we're happy to put that together. And I will say, sorry, I just want to say on Mark, on Mark's part too, I know he's been on a lot of webinars and trainings, and so we do expect this to be fluid, I'll just be honest with you, and we do expect it, it could change again, it could change again multiple times as we learn more, and I think that that's probably where most districts are from what we're hearing, um, because it is new, and to his point, you know, we had to get a policy in place, but then as we continue to learn more, and just kind of like we talked about with the crisis learning today, as we actually do things, we anticipate changing it based on what we learned. And I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, then I was just going to say too, that I think, um, the, I think the phrase is used as reasonable knowledge of an issue, and so essentially, if something's reported, then we do nothing about it, that's where essentially negligence can come into play. I don't know about personal liability on that, I think, um, generally, there's, there are clauses in there that, that you're protected under the district's insurance and liability, but, um, you know, we could certainly look at that, I mean, certainly I'm open to any questions you have, I can run through our council as well, um, but, you know, whatever the board wishes to do with that, the reasonable knowledge standard is how the level one training, even though it's not required, that we are taking that extra step to say, hey, make sure you are reporting this to the coordinator if you get something that is, that is an issue. Again, it's not required that we do that, but that is a recommendation, and that's what we are doing.
And looking at you, some, in a similar way to, a teacher might hear something and not realize without this basic training, that, oh, that's something that I need to report to Laura Lawrence for her to see if it's worth investigating, so.
Yeah.
Just again, trying to take that extra layer precaution and make sure everybody's aware. Any other questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Item ten is public participation, this is a meeting, oh, sorry, item nine, board members' items of interest. Jerry?
I don't have anything today.
Does?
Uh, are we keeping track of how many viewers we have? If, if the meetings were the old style, and there was a lot of interest, we would be able to see it, but without, and I've asked before how many people were watching.
Uh, I think Wayne can get that number, it's not crazy high, but, can you, oh, he's got, well, number of viewers from the last few meetings, when you get a chance? Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Fuji?
No.
And I don't have anything today either. Item ten, public participation, this is a meeting of Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. Please reference the criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. Face covering must be worn at all times, and social distancing will be practiced to the greatest extent possible. Um, Jeremy or Angie, either of you received anything?
No, no.
And nobody's standing outside. Item eleven, scheduling of the next board meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for next Thursday, September seventeenth, at six thirty here at the administrative office, and streaming will be available on the district website.
And I just wanted to let you all know, I know Leanna is aware, um, and I apologize, I think this is only the, the second board meeting I've missed in eight years, but, um, they moved my daughter's volleyball senior night to next Thursday, so they're trying to do all the senior nights early, in case teams get shut down. So I certainly did not select that date on a board meeting night, but I, hopefully you can understand, I want to be there for her senior night, so Mr. Cooper will be filling in for me next week.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Um, item twelve, business items, twelve point one, it is recommended the board approve the Educational Service Center District Service Plan for the twenty 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 twenty-one school year, may have a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, nobody's indicated, but I'm assuming this is you, Angie?
Yes, and certainly Jeremy as well, if, if he has anything to add, but this is just our standard, um, services that we get through the ESC each year.
It's just, it's establishing all the services, um, not necessarily the total cost, those are on a, more on a service as used basis.
The ones that are indicated are ones we actually get, and then some of them are just costless if we were to use those services, so that we have an understanding what the pricing is.
Any questions for Andrew or Jeremy on that one? Jeremy, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Okay. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes. Item thirteen, executive session.
We do not have anything, we had it on there just as a placeholder, if anyone needed it.
All right. If not, um, item fourteen is recommended the board adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.